...scheduled meeting for the City Council of the City of Calistoga. It is Tuesday, October 1st at 6:01 PM. City Clerk, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Kraus.
Here.
Councilmember Lopez Ortega.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
On vacation.
Vice Mayor Dunstford.
Here.
And Mayor Canning.
Here. If you have not already done so, please silence or put your cellphones on vibrate. And if you all, please stand and join me for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And Irene, that's on the printed agenda as well? Okay, so on your agenda, you'll notice item number C, or item, letter C, said "Report from Closed Session." That is a typo, there was no closed session between the last City Council meeting and this one. The other thing you also notice is we're transitioning over to, while we set the pace for the county in most things, we're the last in the county to go over to an iPad-driven system for agendas and City Council meetings. So we'll slowly be transitioning over to that. Some of us are the early guinea pigs on that, and all in an effort to keep us more efficient and also eliminate the paper waste that is created by the full agenda packets. So when you see me up here typing, or swiping, or sliding, I'm not watching a video or TV show, I'm actually moving the agenda along and following the items along here. And these are the exact same agendas electronically that you see on our website and that are available to you in print in the back of the room. All right, so we will now move on to oral communication on consent items or non-agendized items. This time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters on the consent calendar or matters of municipal concern that are not on the agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, also known as the Brown Act. However, the Council cannot consider any issues or take action on any request during this comment period. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes so that all speakers have an opportunity to address the City Council. I only have one speaker card under Public Comment, and that is from Daniel. If you'd like... I'm sorry?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to address the Council under Oral Communication? Should you so choose, but you're not required, please share with us your name and your address, and keep your comments to a maximum of... Thank you.
Yeah, Kurt Laraku, 1707 Michael Way, Calistoga. I have some comments on the water system that I've been working on since May of 2006, and I think the Council needs to get up to speed on a couple items. This started with Matt Hickerson and his life partner Debbie O'Gorman asking me to consult that they were having with a new Kimball water line replacement in May of 2006. The project had not installed raw water meter backflow device and was included in the project plans. I went to the site, did locate the meter box on Bennett Lane, and asked them to show me the existing meter. The old meter was 500 feet north, no black flow device adjacent to Napa River on private property owned by the Aves family. The City of Calistoga had told them they would pay to move it themselves. The long battle with the city started from that one item. I was contacted in 2007, there was a drinking water that was anything but drinkable from the O'Gormans. I found that the city was using the old main, not the new main, to supply drinking water through various vineyard properties with irrigation crossconnections. I alerted the state of California, and engineer Guy Shot assured me everything was fine in 2008. I alerted him the Fige Iron Water Tank was being chlorinated with large chlorine tanks at the site. He stated he had inspected it that year and saw none. I told him I have pictures dated. I called in in 2012 to the drinking water operations in Santa Rosa, spoke with project engineer Amy Little. I told her that the irrigation and drinking water lines were cross-connected from Kimball. Amy asked me to send in Google Maps of the crossconnections I was aware of. I did. Fact was, the City of Calistoga Public Works Director Mike Kern received a state-mandated crossconnection survey for 22 parcels. The city had handpicked the parcels for checked, and there weren't any active connections. I conducted a Kimball water main assessment extensively of irrigation water crossconnection from 2017 till today. The survey included multiple witnesses, pictures, and dates. I then contacted Matt Foster, sanitary engineer of the drinking water...
You have 30 seconds.
...who had completed the detailed inspection of the Kimball water treatment plant. I asked him to come for a tour. I met Matt on 9/17/19 at 2:00 PM at the Kimball water plant. He was given a full tour of the frauds.
10 seconds.
He had... I don't need the little 10 sentence stuff, I just have two paragraphs here.
You have three minutes.
The first two plates show that the operation...
Your three minutes is up, thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. You can submit your...
...of a direct connection to the old main.
The rest of your comments via paper, thank you.
The next site was an equalization valve.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the Council? Your three minutes is up, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the Council? Thank you. Mr. McNay, welcome back.
Where am I, man?
Vacation, I assume.
Dennis McNay, Foothill Parking... Oh, Foothill Boulevard. Anyway, I have used Kurt Laraku's professional services for water witching over 15 years for a variety of water line selection and finding blowout and leaks of pipe junctions or in repair. He has been very helpful, he hasn't failed me yet. I was asked to take part and witness the city's Calistoga-Kimball 2005 USDA-funded new water mains operation as a fraudulent practices for over a year from September 18... 2018 to September 2019. These are some of the actual findings I witnessed. The new water main flow was diverted into a vineyard below the plant's entry gate on EVY Road. I witnessed the new main was empty at the EVY bridge crossing. The steel pipe main, when tapped, was hollow, the pipe was warm to the touch. I also witnessed that the locked Test Fountain Plan Detail W-54 had no water in the city main nor lateral line. The Test Fountain was hooked to a vinyl tube coming from a private vineyard and was leaking from the box a fair amount of water, and when tested for chlorine proved to have none. I also witnessed a recent series of valves on Bennett Lane where the new main had been hooked to what is called the equalization valve, a project done by Mike Kern. Mr. Laraku witched the main valve, and it had no water flow. He then proceeded to show me following hidden water lines that were flowing water to another vineyard with a wind reed. He then showed me four more hidden lines showing flowing water when witched. Mr. Laraku called these hidden water lines "bandit lines" for taking Kimball water from the old main circa 1940 across the Napa River. I also witnessed the O'Gorman drinking water cistern had no chlorine present flowing into the cistern. Thank you.
Sir, I appreciate that. Is there anyone else wishing to address the Council? Yes, sir, Daniel. Please share with us your name and your address.
Sure, there's three minutes, Chris.
Thank you very much.
My name is Daniel Kents. I'm at 213 Champagne West, Calistoga, California. I want to make a brief statement about the First Amendment rights. As they're enumerated, everybody pays attention to what the enumeration is, but the last one's really important. The right of petition is expressly sent out in the First Amendment, the right of the people to petition redress for grievances, yet the petition clause seems to strike most courts and legal commentaries as obvious and uninteresting. Petition rights don't seem to attract much controversy. I'm a witness to the following events, and this is truthful account to the best of my knowledge and recollection. I'm the editor and publisher of several news websites along with Kurt Laraku, environmental editor and staff reporter for radio Calistoga, anybody wants to write that down, dot com, calistogapickiannews.com, and we've been associated and reporting on this public works project for over seven years. I would like at this point to witness my observations regarding what appeared to be from time to time an inflow of private, into a private reservoir during the summer months and into the fall before the rains started. This observation was made from Hillcrest Country Inn, 3225 Lake County Highway, to a reservoir next to 3250 Bennett Lane. The only source I could determine for the flow would be from a pipeline from another reservoir or a crossconnection from the Kimball Dam pipeline. It is to my knowledge that it would not be from a ground well because the water is geothermal, and it wouldn't be good for the grapes. Let it be known that I have accompanied Mr. Laraku on numerous observations regarding his report, and have amassed a large collection of photos, videos, and documentary evidence. Thank you for your attention to these comments.
Thank you, Daniel, very much, appreciate it. Is there anyone else wishing to address the Council under Oral Communication? All right, with that said, I'll close oral communication, and we'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented unless a modification is requested.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, a second by Councilmember Lopez Ortega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Council requests and ideas for discussion. Councilmember Lopez Ortega.
Yes, I just want to report that last week I did attend a training and seminar on the Census 2020 that it was hosted by Naleo, National Association of Latino Elected Officials. I got a scholarship for this event, and it was very well attended, and it was very important to attend it because I realized how important it is that we all count when the time comes for the census. Because it depends on how much money we will receive for our school and for our cities. So when the time comes to be counted, please be counted and respond to the surveys. And also, I just want to make a comment about speeding. Yesterday, I had a bad experience driving almost in front of the elementary school. I was driving slow because I had a baby in the car and an older lady, and this lady behind me, I guess she was in a hurry, and she passed by me and almost caused a big accident. So I just want to recommend that if you are in a rush, be careful when you're driving, especially in front of the school. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the work you continue to do on the water authorities and agencies.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Councilmember Kraus.
Yes, two things. One, of course, the big news in town was the public safety power shut off. And I know that the Rancho de Calistoga Mobile Home Park was shut down for a number of hours. And I was wondering if City Manager Kern would describe what steps the city took to help those residents over there during that time.
Sure. When we found out that there was going to be a power shut off, we knew that that portion of the community was going to be impacted regardless of whether or not PG&E was able to bring in the temporary generators. We coordinated with the police and fire department to have them do routine patrols through the area on about an hourly basis. We also sent out some Nixls advising the community that PG&E had set up a customer service center at the fairgrounds, which included a cooling center and charging station for oxygen and our phones. We also set up some temporary phone charging stations at the fire department and in front of City Hall. So as part of the fire department's patrol, they had cold water. I think they were able to preemptively address some emergency calls that they might have otherwise received because it was relatively quiet from a review of the calls that they actually took. So I think every, all in all, notwithstanding the fact that people were without power, I think the city was very responsive and properly patrolling the area for any emergencies that might have come up.
And I believe that the fire department put some, a call training on, over there, and helped some of the seniors there...
Gary, can you turn your mic?
Put Nixle on their cellphone.
Sorry, your mic.
And put Nixle on their cellphone.
We've done a couple of things with regard to emergency notification. Zach put together a small one-page tutorial that we posted on our website so that it kind of gave a step-by-step instruction on how to sign up for Nixle. And then periodically, the fire department and the police department will do kind of like a public education or safety education deal with the homeowners association or the park association. And one of the things I've asked them to do is include helping people sign up for Nixle if they don't already have it. So physically taking their phone and helping them program it if necessary.
Yeah, because I noticed we have Lana with us this evening, and she had came in two meetings ago or so and voiced some concerns about potential issues with public safety power shut offs. So I did want to kind of go over that so that folks understood that those comments were taken seriously and that the city took many positive steps to help out over there.
We also reached out to NVTA to see if they could do a dedicated shuttle run on the day of the power shut off. Because it was such short notice, they couldn't get a driver there in time, but because it was a Wednesday, it was, I'll call it Wednesday light for the tourism, so there was adequate shuttle capacity and availability. We probably need to message that a little bit better, that if people do need to get to a resource, that that is the, no pun intended, the vehicle to carry them there.
Right. And then, the next thing is, is I got caught in traffic at Petrified Forest and Foothill. It was Saturday, and I had not had any warning that that traffic was going to be backed up in that manner. The traffic coming into Calistoga was backed up to the county line, and it took 45 minutes to get from the county line down to 128. So I don't know who's responsible for making sure that the city is made aware of issues like that, but it certainly was a dropped ball on somebody's part.
There was, if I could, I was caught in that same traffic, but I did receive a Nixle earlier in the day announcing that there would be, there would be a disturbance at that for long periods of time as a result of PG&E work.
Usually they have, in the past, there's been signboards set up and like that, and I must have missed the notice, but...
So it has been problematic on Petrified Forest, PG&E over exceeding their authorizations with their encroachment permits. I personally wasn't aware that they were planning on doing any work in town, and I don't believe our public works department was either. Generally, we do ask for advanced signage and notifications so that people could take an alternate route if necessary. That being said, we certainly don't want to, to the greatest degree possible, infringe upon PG&E's ability to make this area safe.
Their safety improvements, I recognize that.
And I certainly don't want to take the liability of telling them to stop work in the event that there is something critical that needs to be fixed.
Okay. Further note on that item, which you might want to take back to whoever our contact is with PG&E, a local resident in that area who was impacted inquired with PG&E as to why the work was being done then and there, and that there, they explained the technical reasons, the then, they were, the PG&E represented stated that that is when the City of Calistoga preferred them to do that work. So just an FYI when you're talking to our friends at PG&E. Vice Mayor Dunstford.
Yeah, just a little bit of follow-up on that. So, Mike, that being our first PSPS, do you think things could have been handled better in terms of PG&E's communication with the city? I know there was some level of frustration on your part, I had quite a bit of frustration, and I don't know if there's any room for improvement?
So we had a good conversation with John Stallman, I think it was Friday, Thursday or Friday of last week. He agreed that the information that was provided to the city was lacking. The frustration for me was, I was getting conflicting information. Their website said one thing, and they were telling me that downtown was going to remain energized, it's just going to be the west part of the city that's going to be impacted. They couldn't tell me what the west side of the city meant. Once we overlaid the actual outage compared to what they had shown on their website, it was significantly different. And those are the conversations that we've had with them and will continue to have.
Significantly different as in a much smaller footprint than what was anticipated.
Correct. And that's what was causing me concern because what had been projected or shown on their webpage included the high school and the elementary school, and the superintendent was trying to make business decisions as to whether or not to cancel school.
Yeah. Does it make sense to put this in writing, like send a letter, and also copy the media? Because I know the media has, you know, is very interested in this subject. I mean, I got, I had a couple reporters that reached out to me, and I didn't respond to them, but it's, we need to put the pressure on them to get this right because it seems like they have the capability of telling us who's going to lose power, who's not. And, you know, it affects, obviously, people. And, and, you know, I had to try to secure a generator, and we're talking thousands of dollars.
Right.
And other businesses were trying to do the same. School, no school, like, these are big issues.
Correct. What I relate to them was, I, for my purposes, to provide you with accurate information, I need to know where that clear, bright line is. And hopefully, I know that they've gotten the message that what they provided was not sufficient, and it will be a work in progress.
Yeah, because when they came and made their presentation first, they did tell us everything west of the river is on its own grid. And then this last situation, they've proven that actually, no, they can break up the grid. So I still don't even know, like, in the event of another one where we're using, I guess, the, the microgrid that's going to power just the downtown, like, I still don't believe that I'm not on it. Or, I just don't know.
Right. It, I wish I had more answers for you, but I don't. And I know it's frustrating to you, it's frustrating for me.
I know that the city manager was on three calls per day during that whole period, 7:30, 12:30, and 5:30?
Correct.
Where PG&E, you know, actually Cal OES and PG&E were giving updates for the five or six counties being impacted, and would literally give an update at each session, who would be out, when they would be out, et cetera. And that is light years ahead of what type of communication we had last year, but I agree with you, there are certainly vast improvements that can be made. So forward progress. While it's disappointing that they couldn't give us the exact grid of what was going to be out and not out, it was a little bit to our benefit that there was a much smaller footprint of outage than was originally communicated. But to your point, is that the new norm going forward or not? And they haven't been able to demonstrate that at this point.
Right. We've asked them to help us understand their decision-making process and how they make those calls as to where the, where the circuits are going to be opened or closed.
I mean, there must be a map, you know, that, where they can just show us, okay, we're going to take out section A, B, and F. You know, like, there has to be defined footprints based on where the transformers or circuits are located, right?
That's, that's what I asked them. I said, Chris was in my office when I was asking those very pointed questions, you need to give me more detailed information. It's not sufficient to say, well, it's within, the first, the first comment was, well, I can, we can show you within 300 yards. And I said, that's not, that's not sufficient. Well, we can show you within 100 feet.
Exactly.
Yeah.
900 feet.
So it's, I, I do hear your, and we will be communicating with them, trying to get this dialed in. As Chris mentioned, we were fortunate that they were able to strategically and surgically reduce the area that was impacted. And I don't know if, if the same process can be used when we're on portable generation. Their first order of triaging is, if they can maintain power to the substation and energize the town through that, then they'll do exactly what they did on Wednesday. If they go on generation, portable generation, then it's a different, it's a different situation, different configuration, and it will probably very closely mirror the map that I shared with you that they provided that Wednesday afternoon as well. So for me, a lot of it was, I was getting that information at 6:30, you know, quarter to 7:00 on Tuesday night, trying to make informed decisions for what's going to happen Wednesday morning at 2:00 or 4:00. It wasn't fun.
Yeah, no, I know. No, I know, it's frustrating. I just really think we need to turn up the heat. I mean, we're going to be dealing with this, it's the new normal. So we can hopefully refine this thing and get it so we really know what's going to happen and respond accordingly.
And I think, I think they're in a position that they, at the line level, they want to be able to do that. I think they're being hampered at the EOC or their Incident Command Center where only certain pieces of information are getting released to the public. And for them to go rogue and go around, you know, what the corporate line is, is not good for, you know, wouldn't be good for lots of reasons. When we have our EOC in operation, we're very careful in what kind of information we release. We don't want to release more than, and, you know, make it worse, or, you know, give out false information without a check and balance. So hopefully, they'll get this dialed in better, and we'll be able to impress, we have impressed upon them, you know, the difficulties with the type of information they're giving us.
Okay. All right, I have two items. As previously mentioned, there was already a funeral for the previous mayor, Jack Jingles, at the National Cemetery out near Sacramento, in Dixon, to be specific. I did attend that on behalf of the city and commented and shared our condolences with the family and friends of Mayor Jingles. There'll also be, and the date has been fixed, a celebration of life and honor service for Mayor Jingles in Calistoga on October 26th at 1:00 PM at Pioneer Park with a rain location of the community center. Again, that's October 26th at 1:00 PM at Pioneer Park with a rain location to be the community center, and that is being organized by the American Legion and the City of Calistoga to honor the previous mayor. And then the second thing, unfortunately, still on a sad note, as some of you know, Calistoga lost a great citizen and a great supporter this past week of Calistoga, and a lot of his efforts and his philanthropy were quiet and always focused on children and education specifically, and one of the founders of the Calistoga Education Foundation. And he will be sadly missed, and that's Bob Pacota, known around town as Uncle Bob. Another side note, while he started in the coffee business a few decades ago, he is considered one of the founding fathers of the Napa Valley wine industry with Pacota Wines, and was certainly part of the whole crew that helped get Napa County, Napa Valley specifically, to where it is. So our thoughts and prayers are with the family, his two daughters and his former wife. They, Bob did not... are with the family, his two daughters and his former wife. They, Bob did not want a service or ceremony, but he said a party might be okay. So look for some announcement of that coming up in the future. But he's certainly a guy who, a good friend of mine over the years. And whether you'd like to blame him or thank him, Bob is one of the reasons that I am sitting up here today because saying no to Bob was not an acceptable answer for anything, including my running for office starting in 2010. So with that said, keep them in your thoughts. City Manager's Report.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmembers, a couple of things. The city has released or had released a initial study and mitigated negative declaration analysis for the Riverside Pond Relocation and Lining Project. Under that notice, the comments were due yesterday at 5:00 PM. We've received a couple of requests, one from Fish and Game to extend that comment period. So we will be doing that. There'll be an extension of one week. So the comments will be due, close of business, 5:00 PM on October 7th. So we're adding a week to that. If you have any comments, please get them in. With regard to PG&E, if you recall, the preferred location for the planned interconnection hub was down at the Little League Field. They're not going to be able to perfect that this year. The backup site is the, trying to give a piece of property next to the Jehovah Witness Church at Silverado Trail and Lincoln Avenue. In preparation of, or in anticipation of potential additional PSPs this year, they're going to start site preparation work on Thursday morning at 10:00 AM. What that will entail is clearing and grubbing the site, installing a couple of power poles, electrical connection to the main grid, and placement of a temporary transformer. So if you see work activity out there this coming Thursday, that's what it is. And they're making the site ready to be able to move in generators in the event that they need to power the city up from that location.
I just have to ask, are they going to be obstructing traffic at all?
No.
Okay.
And then tomorrow at noon, we are going to do a test run of the old fire station siren that's been placed up on Mount Washington. It'll be at 12 o'clock. At 10:00 AM, we're going to send out a NICSIL alert, letting people know that this is only a test. We'll send out another one at 11:55 that this is only a test. And then about 12:08 after the test, we will send out a NICSIL that it's all clear. So if you hear that siren tomorrow at noon, don't panic. This is part of our new normal of our emergency notification system. Going forward, if there is an actual emergency, the sirens are not programmed to give any other message than please avail yourself to other media, whether it be NICSIL alerts, city's website, the radio, next door, that something is happening, you need to get informed and be prepared to take action. So we'll see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on, Proclamations, Presentations, and Award. We have one presentation this evening. By Visit Napa Valley, it's their annual report. So with us tonight, and no stranger to the city of Calistoga and a big supporter, I might say, of Calistoga, and we may have employed a child of yours at one point as a lifeguard, I believe, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank him for his service. Catherine, welcome back. Please introduce yourself and the organization you represent.
My pleasure. I'm Catherine Haywood with Visit Napa Valley, and thank you for having me tonight. Thank you to Mike for helping me arrange this. We'd like to give you an annual update, top three primary topics, a little closure on fiscal year 19, what's coming up for fiscal year 20, and tourism matters, the information from our 2018 annual, biannual visitor profile and economic impact studies. I did present the clerk with our fiscal year 20 plan. That was not part of the emailed communication. Also, our data set for fiscal year 19, so you can do some deeper digging, and our information card on tourism matters. So those things should be in front of you. So for starters, on fiscal year 19, as you can see, we have integrated here our paid, owned, and earned channels. We address group sales and travel trade, travel trade being like travel, traditional travel agents, metrics from our partnership base, our welcome center, and then community and industry relations. And just as a backup, we are funded through a tourism improvement district. And it's a 2% assessment to all lodging businesses. The city of Calistoga has a local tourism improvement district. So these funds are from visitor stays. The resident does not fund any of this activity. I'd like to make that clear upfront. Moving on to Smith Travel, we have a recap of the year. Smith Travel Research is our metrics for the lodging industry, showing occupancy, revenue generated. And as you can see, occupancy is flat, and that has been the case since about 2016. ADR and RevPAR revenue, however, have remained strong, and that's hotels are still driving rate. You will see there was been, there's been a small increase in supply, and demand has now comfortably caught up. With our budget, we had about over $7 million in revenue, primarily coming from the TID, as I mentioned before. And our expenses are out about $7.5 million. We also have a little bit of revenue from our partnership. So in addition to lodging revenue, we enjoy partnerships with wineries, transportation, and attraction companies. And about $500,000 this year was contributed by the unincorporated county TID for brand promotion. This year, we embarked upon a long-range plan process. We'd like to do a three-year plan. And our updated mission is to promote, protect, and enhance the Napa Valley destination. And we've added as a vibrant place to visit, live, and work. That is a reflection of a shift from being a destination marketing organization to a destination management organization. We know that we're an integral part of our community and not a standalone marketing agency. As part of the long-range process, we partnered with Destination International, and we surveyed our stakeholders, and I like to call them shareholders because we're all in this together as a community. This included partners, our staff, our board of directors, community leadership, some elected official feedback. And we are in the trailblazer category, a very enviable position, having strong community support and a very well-established destination, thanks in part to Calistoga. We have also developed four primary strategic goals. And as you can imagine, strategic marketing and sales is the number one. We will be, this year, as, as the market gets more competitive and the softening of the economy, we can't rest on our laurels. So we are looking at expanding demographics. We learned from '16 to '18 that the number of travel parties that included families with children has doubled. So Napa Valley might not be known as a family destination, but as our luxury traveler tends to bring children, we need to expand how we communicate that message. Goal number two, collaborative destination management. As I mentioned, we will continue to partner with and support initiatives that address workforce housing and transportation. As you may know, we partnered with MTA in a pilot program with the Napa Valley Ventners to explore commute patterns and incentivize our workers in the tourism industry to partake in pilot programs for getting out of their single occupancy vehicles. Our proactive partner in community engagement includes those kinds of activities. And we will be doing a better job of getting our tourism messaging out there and the benefits to the community. Organizational excellence, what organization doesn't want to be excellent? So we will look at staff development and those kinds of capabilities. With our fiscal year 20 objectives, again, you have our plan in front of you, the nice spiral-bound report. And as you can imagine, top of the list is to deliver the sales for Napa Valley as the best destination to come to visit here, sorry. I don't want to spend a lot of time on this because I promised Mike I'd go quickly. In terms of, again, being a destination management organization versus strictly marketing, we know that we have a positive impact on our community. It generates business investment. It creates jobs. I'll go into that a little bit more in detail. But also culturally enriches our lives. Up and down the valley, there are attractions that locals benefit from as well as the visitor. We like to show what the visitors like most about visiting Napa Valley, particularly because it resonates with us as locals, a relaxing, serene, beautiful environment that we all get to enjoy. So to the card that you have in front of you, we're circulating these far and wide. And of note, in the $2.23 billion that has been spent for 2018, that growth year over year from '16 was 16%. In contrast, the visitor growth was only 9%, so demonstrating that people are spending more money and staying longer. Of the $3.85 million, the day-tripper growth is 5% and the overnight growth at 13%. So almost two and a half times. Again, we know that they spend more money in our restaurants, in our shops, when they stay longer. Of the domestic visitors, about 80% of our visitors are coming from within the United States. California has the highest, and I'm having a hard time reading that green, so I apologize for that. Visitor volume, obviously, the highest from California. But Washington, Florida, and New York are all the highest spends. This is data that our marketing team will use to better target our marketing efforts. We look at international as well, and you'll see that the spend comes from Australia and Canada, while the visitation comes from Canada and China. Again, this helps us deploy our resources. In the Napa Valley visitor spend, I just wanted to note here the, the nice number for retail. That includes wineries, tasting rooms, as well as traditional shopping. So about a third of that $2.23 billion comes from retail. And then lodging and restaurants are about neck and neck. As far as jobs, we are the second-largest job provider in the restaurant and lodging. We've included retail here, but that also includes tasting rooms, with about half a billion dollars in payroll. So we are supporting the livelihoods of a lot of our community. The contributions to the community in terms of tax generation, tax revenue, the $53 million is the TOT, and that goes to each municipality's general fund. And that helps support things like road improvements, public safety, parks and recreation, property tax at $18.18 million, and sales tax at $14 million. Just how you line up with the rest of the county of the $53 million in TOT collected, city of Napa happens to be the highest, and Calistoga comes in at about $6.3 million. This is a nice little growth chart that dates back to when the TID was put in place. That was, it started in 2010. Again, just a comparison. And I think it's safe to say some of the biggest jumps are when hotel supply did increase. We also provide some detail by jurisdiction just so that you can see comparatively the number of rooms throughout the county compared to the population. So TOT growth per, TOT collected by resident and by room, and then as a percent of the adopted general fund budget. Last slide is what we like to show each municipality. So again, we get some of this information from your website, but it gives a snapshot of what it looks like in your community as far as collections per resident and per room. And I'm happy to take any questions. Hopefully, that did take to you, Lon.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, any questions? Well, I, for one, continue to appreciate what Visit Napa Valley does for the community as a whole, not just the destination-seeking community. Clearly, Calistoga was the first destination in all of Napa County, compliments of our founder, and continues to be a popular place to come to. And the reality is, whether you choose to accept it or not, since our inception in 1863, we have been a tourism destination. And it is something we should embrace, celebrate, and maximize the benefit for those of us that live here. If they're going to come here anyway, why not let them leave something behind to improve the quality of life for the rest of us?
Agreed. And we look forward to helping you tell that story.
Thank you very much. Anyone in the public like to address the council or any questions? All right. Catherine, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank your colleagues for us as well.
I will.
All right. Moving on, we have, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar as presented, unless anyone would like to pull the single item on there.
Sub move.
Second.
A motion by Vice Mayor Dunford, a second by Councilmember Kraus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. No public hearings. We'll move on to general government. Item number three, resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Matrix Consulting Group not to exceed $54,000 in approving a budget adjustment in the same amount to conduct an evaluation of police service alternatives. The recommended action is consider adopting the resolution. Taking us through this item today, I believe, will be Chief Selaya. Welcome back, Chief.
Thank you. Mayor Candy, city council members, city manager Kern, and city clerk, thank you for having me this, this evening. And looking at the staff report I prepared for you. Back in May, at one of our last budget sessions, I had brought an issue that was significant facing the city of Calistoga, but specifically the police department, which had to do with recruitment and retentions of our staff. As I've shared with the city council, we are down three vacant positions. We've been down vacant positions for the past year and have been challenged with trying to recruit officers and staff for the police department. As a reminder, our staff is myself, two sergeants, and eight officers. Right now of the eight officers, I, there's three vacant positions. And I have a sergeant who is planning on retirement, I expect, within the next six months on his anniversary date. That'll put us down four positions. As a result of that, the council charged myself and city manager Kern to come forward with some ideas, some police services alternatives. Manager Kern and I have been, have discussed this issue and have come to the conclusion that to best serve the city council would be to go out and identify a objective third-party expert that conducts such analysis in the areas of contracting services, whether it be with the St. Orlando Police Department, or the Napa Sheriff's Department, or a hybrid model of contracting services, or to look within our own organization to determine, you know, through analysis and data, what can we do internally to make ourselves more competitive. We identified Matrix Consulting Group. They're a local firm out of California. They've been around for about, since 2009, I believe was the time they started. They're very reputable. They've done a number of services. The last report that I read was one out of Kensington, which was almost identical as far as looking at the same kind of issues we're facing. They've provided services for at least 100 communities within California and several hundred throughout the, throughout the nation. So I have attached a copy of their proposal. They were given the, the scope of work, as I've laid out to you, which is looking at contracting services, hybrid services, hybrid contracting services, and are looking at our own organization to see what we can do to put us in a better position. And so I'm here to answer any questions you might have of what's before you, whether it's the proposal or my staff report.
Thank you very much, chief. Council members, questions? Councilmember Kraus.
Yes, glad to see that you finally made it here to us, because it was a while ago that we discussed that this needed to come up. We did have a change in command at the city manager level that may have delayed this product. Just as a general observation of police services throughout the state of California that I've seen, is that recruitment and retention is a big problem, and it's not confined to our police department. I've seen television reports about large cities like Oakland and San Jose, as well as small cities like ourself, that have issues getting well-qualified individuals to police our community. So hopefully, we can come up with some good answers.
And your point is very well taken. I mean, we compete with East Bay, but as well as the local counties here. Specifically for us, within our county, clearly, Napa Police Department and Napa Sheriff's Department are competitors of ours. Just from our last chiefs meeting earlier this month, I learned that the sheriff's department is probably about 14 positions down. They have a number of people they're sending to the academy, they're having challenges recruiting qualified candidates. The Napa Police Department is about seven positions down, they have four that are going to enter the academy, and they're still recruiting. Their, you know, Napa Police Department shared with me that they're bringing to their council an incentive package to offer upwards to $14,000 to their candidates just to sign on the dotted line. Currently, Napa Sheriff's Department offers $5,000 for an applicant to sign on their dotted line. Those are kinds of the things that we are competing with, as far as trying to get qualified candidates. As I've shared with you before at the workshops, is that, you know, it's not just one thing, it's a number of things, you know? We are who we are, this is a great community, it's a great place to work, but it's different. I mean, we are in a rural area, we have some professional growth opportunities that we lack compared to other community or other police departments, so that's a challenge for us. And then with the salary and compensation, that is also. I think there are ways that we can get around some of this stuff, but, you know, I would look to this consultant to kind of bring some maybe fresh perspectives and some ideas as far as things for you all to consider on how we want to invest.
Other council members? I very much appreciate that we're doing this, I understand why we need to do it. I know you have served as a training ground for other departments who we've recruited, trained, and then had some of our folks move on to other departments and other opportunities, which I will never fault the individual for. But I have always, you know, I've always had four things that have concerned me about having a freestanding police department here, and they've been staffing, training, equipping, and liability. And that is the, creates potential safety issues for the officers, but also for the community as a whole, and the entire state of California. And I went through their report and other communities they've represented, I think we're going to find pretty consistent messaging for ourselves, as they've found in some of these other communities, the entire state of California is faced with this. And it's a very difficult profession and industry to compete in, especially when we're where we are. But those four concerns have always been there for me, and I'm not advocating one way or another, but if we can't afford to staff, train, and equip our officers for their own safety, but also for that of the community, it creates an enormous liability issue for us as a city, and this body up here has a fiduciary responsibility and a public health and safety responsibility to the community. So I appreciate the fact that we're looking into this, and I appreciate the understanding of our current staff, because they're impacted by this, when we're down as many officers as we are, and pulling, having to pull overtime that they may not necessarily want to do on a regular basis, so thank you for that. Anyone in the community with any questions? So the deliverable on this is about 14 weeks?
That is what the proposal states. If they can bring it in early, I'm sure they will, but that's the plan that they provided us.
And everything's in bounds, in terms of what they can look at, get involved in, in terms of recommendations?
Yeah, and during the, I mean, we have the ability under the scope to change the scope if we think, you know, we as a council, as a staffer, as the council, wish to look at other alternatives. One of the things that, you know, I think is good, and a good position for us, is that, you know, we're looking at the recruitment and retentions, which is honestly, it's a dollar figure. That's really what it is when you're looking at some of these things. You know, as opposed to some communities they look at where they're having strife, they're having issues. I'm going to go on a limb and say that, you know, my interactions with the community has been very positive. I think they like having their police department, I think they like the level of service that we're getting, I mean, they see the output of what we are providing. They don't always see what happens behind the curtains to make that happen. And we do have a lot of support from our neighboring agencies, whether it's San Alina, or whether it's the Napa Sheriff's Department. Napa Sheriff's is kind of struggling at the moment, so they're kind of limited in how much support they can provide us. You know, you bring up about whether we can afford our own police department, I've heard that term before. You know, you're going to pay regardless whether you're investing within your organization or investing out, you know? There's a number of things we can do, but whether it's compensation, I mean, there's salary, and then there's retirement, and you all have heard me speak about this before, our retirement currently, the compensation, and, you know, I'm just stating what the reality is, what it is right now. I don't, it's not that I agree, I like it, dislike it, it is what it is, but the surrounding agencies, all in our county and outside, the retirement formula is 2.7 at 57. You know, ours is 2% at 57. If you work 30 years, you're going to retire out at 2.7, at 81% of your salary, in San Alina, Napa, the Sheriff's Department, all around. If you work for the city of Calistoga at 30 years, you're going to walk away with 60%. So if you're young and you're starting a family, and you want to buy a house or something like that, you're looking long-term, you're looking at, should I retire, am I going to stay with an organization, or start with an organization where I retire out at 60% of my salary, or 81% of my salary? You know, I think that's kind of a no-brainer, as far as, you know, what am I going to look at long-term? And then those other things that I had spoken about, you know, we don't have detectives, we just have a K-9 or K-9 retired, we haven't fulfilled that position. You know, we don't, I have a SWAT team, or a full-time detective, or those kinds of things. And so those are kind of like little things that I think attract people, you know? The council's been extremely supportive, and I thank you very much for approving the MDCs. That was a step in the right direction, not only to make us a, you know, a project out of professional organization, but also when people come in, you know, as we're recruiting people, and they're looking at, you know, we are utilizing technology the way it should be used. Those are some things. And for the dollar amount, I mean, just rough numbers, minimally contracting out, whether it's with the county, they make close, if not more, $1,900 a month more than our officers. If you contract out, you're going to end up paying the 2.7, and you're going to pay the $1,900 extra and the administrative fee, on what that's going to be, whether it's a three-year contract or a five-year. I'm not saying that that's a negative why not to do that, because they, clearly, there was a lot of uppluses to do that way. But from us, is that the right thing for us? And that's for you as a council to decide if that's where we want to go, with input from the community. I know that when I've had conversations with community members at various events, they're very supportive of the police department, and when I actually explain it, they go, "We understand, you're exactly right," because they feel the same thing within their professions. They struggle against the same things, and we are not the only organization that has these challenges.
From my perspective, I'm not viewing this exercise at all as a cost-saving measure, because I don't think it's going to be. I think what it will certainly do is reset the reality of what it would, what it will cost to have a fully functioning, fully-staffed police department for a community of our size. I think the, I know the caliber of who is in our department is incredible, and we're benefiting a great deal from that, but it presents challenges for them with all the extra work they have to do. I have no expectation that this is going to come back and say, "Oh, here's a way to save money." It's not for me, it's about, can we continue to staff, train, equip, et cetera? And if the reality is, and we want our own as a community, we still want our own police department, and if that new number is, you know, 50% more than what we're paying now, then it's 50% more than what we're paying now, we have to make that decision. So this will certainly give us a reality of what to expect out there. But I'm not going in for myself, go with any preconceived notions of whether we outsource, in-source, or whatever the case may be, it's, hey, what is the norm, or the reality of what it's going to cost to have this?
Because at the moment, we are not getting our return on investment. You know, I've laid out in the report, but just to narrow it down, just for 2019, we've had three processes, 14 applicants for those three processes, we've done eight backgrounds on those 14, and none of them have passed the background. We're doing a process next week, we have eight candidates, you know, for three positions. That's a pretty good ratio, as far as if I'm a candidate, you know, I've had it where we've had four or five candidates for three positions, that, and even then, I've struggled to try to get individuals. And, you know, we have good officers, and they're here, they love working here, they do a great job, you know? But I'll be honest, that our packages, our ability to recruit, have narrowed our ability to broaden our, being able to draw people in. And a lot of it, you know, when people look for jobs, they're looking at salaries and compensation, that's the first thing, and then they look at the other stuff as they come through. And we got to be able to attract individuals to look at us.
I would say, though, I think we've been struggling with this issue since I've been on the council, which has been 15 years. I don't think we've ever had a full staff department in my 15 years.
We did for one year that I was here. I got, it took me two and a half years to get fully staffed, and for one year, we were fully staffed, and as a year and a half ago, we just, one dropped, two dropped, and we just, we're down to three.
Yeah, but I guess my point is, is that, you know, going years back, I think we were competitive with our neighbors. And, you know, as the cost of living, cost of real estate, everything's increased so much that, you know, we, you know, it sounds like probably haven't kept pace. But I, my point is, I don't even know if that's going to actually solve the problem that we're still going to, you know, there's other issues, as you've mentioned, you know, people like to be where the action is, you know, Calistoga might be a little too sleepy. Some people might prefer that. So the idea of, you know, contracting out with, you know, a much larger force, there's perhaps a guarantee that we're always going to be staffed. And as we add, you know, a couple, two or three new resorts, you know, there's just going to be more activity and more of a need to ensure that we're well-staffed.
Well, I guess that's going to be the difficult decision that you all have to contemplate, you know, given the analysis and given the data, and see what is, what do you believe is right for the community? And I'm sure with our community, they will have input, and they will be more, they will be bashful as far as sharing their thoughts on the matter.
I think this discussion's going to continue in 14 weeks or so. So I'm sure all these points will be made again, and we'll undoubtedly have some public participation at that time when the report is revealed and the recommendations are made. Perhaps there's a study session we need to do in mayor's forum or something, because this is a tremendous step. I don't know when it was that the police department was first instituted in the city of Calistoga, but I'm sure it's well over 100 years ago. And so it's going to be a departure, if, or potential departure, as we move forward.
Well, I will say this to the council, that, you know, as long as I'm here, I'm going to continue to push the department forward, and I'll be putting things, proposals forward to you. There are some things that, yeah, maybe we should wait to get to the, to hear what the proposal has to submit, but for me to be able to manage the department, I have to move things forward, I have to put things forward that I think are in the best interest of the organization and the community as far as us, to be able to do our job. So you're going to continue to get stuff, and I may be a little bit, I don't mean to be confrontational as far as saying that, you know, I hear we got this proposal, I still need to be able to do things, whether it's invest in equipment, invest in people, invest in some smaller, whether it's the corporals, or whether it's longevity pay, or something like that, to get us moving forward.
Appreciate that.
I would say that Chief Selaya has my full support, and I agree that you should continue as if the department was going to have, you know, a future as the Calistoga Police Department, because to do less is just inviting more departures on the part of your folks, and resulting poorer service.
Mitch, do you have a firm departure date yourself?
Well, my contract, I think the end date is the end of this year, so I will, I will be speaking to city manager Kern to see what he has to share with her, my services still welcomed or not.
Yes. So you would be, you would entertain to stay beyond that?
I would, given the project that's before us.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
Because I think this is something-
Because I know that was our goal, was we were wanting to get this handled, you know, before you left.
Sometimes bureaucracy, you know, we move in slow, mysterious ways, and I'm glad to show this before you, hopefully we have your support in looking at this, and to really come to some solid decision-making.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, yes, please. You have to come to the podium, sorry. So the people at home can hear you, and it gets recorded. Share with us your name and your address, should you so choose.
Erica Pusey, 1438 Lake Street. I just wanted to say thank you for working on this, and I'm curious if the city of Kensington took any of the recommendations from the agency, and if they had any successes.
They did, they're actually continuing in the midst of it, there was, there was two reports that came out, and what they run with, as I recall, reading their report, is there were suggested changes within their organization to add positions, and looking at their structure, and they're moving through those phases, there's like a three-phase approach, and I don't know which phase they're in at the moment, but they're, they're taking on the consultant's recommendation. It seems like they shied away from actually contracting out, and more just staying with their organization. I'm familiar with Kensington PD, in my old agency, they were our neighbors, and they were a very small organization, basically, I would say, almost identical to ours, our size.
Thank you.
Good question, thank you. Anyone else? All right, chief, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number four, plan-
Excuse me, mayor, we need a resolution on this one.
Oh, I'm sorry, you do, don't you? All right.
I'll move the resolution.
Thank you.
Aye, seco.
We have a motion by council, Vice Mayor Dunstford, a second by councilmember Lopez Ortega, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks for keeping me in check, city manager. Item number four, planned Calistoga community survey. Recommended action is to receive information on the community survey. Taking us through this this evening will be Zach Toonzinger, city planner, assistant to the city manager. Welcome back, Zach, it's all yours.
Thank you, mayor, thank you, council. Earlier this year, during the goal-setting and budget sessions, the council tentatively gave its blessing for staff to move forward in preparing a community survey. We've been working on this for a number of months now. Many communities these days are doing surveys like this, they've been, in many cases, doing them for a number of years. They are using them as a good way to solicit feedback from residents, as a temperature-taking exercise of residents, to identify trends, and by doing this periodically, it's, I think in some cases, illuminating to see how different issues surface, some issues go away, and to see which things we're being effective at in addressing as a community and as a city In developing the survey, we looked closely and contacted some other cities who've been doing surveys like this in the area, frankly, borrowed some questions that they've had that have been pretty effective, and then working with staff and other departments in the city, developed questions of our own. We also looked at previous surveys the city's conducted, either going back, you know, 10, 20 years, through general planning efforts, or surveys that the recreation department has conducted. has conducted periodically. The survey's broken into, the draft survey's broken into sort of some overall general temperature-taking questions, some questions on public works and streets, community development and planning, and then a large chunk of it's dedicated to parks and recreation questions. And then also, there is a section on demographics. The survey is completely anonymous, or would be completely anonymous, but we do want to make sure we're getting a nice cross-representation of residents and others who are taking the survey, so we can really see and make sure that these answers and these results really are representative of the thoughts and opinions of the community. We are planning and are working on a pretty extensive public outreach campaign for the survey. Again, survey's only good if a large number and a cross-representation of the community actually participate. With that, we're going to have the survey be primarily online, it's going to be in English and in Spanish. We do have a paper survey planned, so if there's people who are unable to do it on the computer or otherwise, we'll be able to do it via paper. It's going to be advertised on the website, we've talked about maybe even sending out a NICSIL alert, there's going to be postcards going out in the mail, flyers, and reaching out to different community groups as well, to really get the word out about this. So, I'm excited to get this out, we're tentatively shooting for kind of the middle of October with your blessing to move forward with this, with the idea that the survey'd be open for a couple weeks into November. That'll give us time then after that to look at the data, compile it, and then come back to you early next year with the results of that, before goal-setting and budget season comes around again. So, we did get some comments from Council Member Williams, I think there were some pretty good comments in there, and I think we can incorporate most of those into the draft survey with your blessing. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and hear any other additional feedback you may have.
Council members, who'd like to lead? When has this been sent out?
Our tentative goal is October 15th. That might be a little flexible, depending on what kind of feedback we get from you tonight, but that's what we're aiming for at this point, we'd like to get this out and in front of the community, particularly before the holidays, you know, kick in in November.
You say also that this will be in English and Spanish, right?
Yes, we actually, in anticipation of moving forward, we actually already have a translation of this current draft being prepared, and of course, we'll incorporate any changes that we may receive into that.
So, a couple of comments, if I may. One of the biggest, and you can put it anywhere in the section, or consider it in any of the sections, but in your first question, how did you hear about this survey? One of the biggest comments we get on many topics, and for the 10 years I've been serving here, it's one of the most frustrating comments we hear, or I hear, is that nobody knows anything about what we're doing, and that we never communicate what we do, when we do it, even suggesting it's secret, et cetera. If there's somewhere in here where you can squeeze in the fact that anyone in the city can register their email address on our website, and get notices for all the Planning Commission agendas, all the City Council agendas, all public notices automatically sent to them, short of us showing up on your doorstep and telling you exactly what's going on, at which meeting, the 11th hour surprises and shock and horror of how could this be happening for the last year and I've never heard about it? I know it's challenging, it's certainly challenging for me, I am sure for my fellow council members, but it's also, can be disheartening to staff, who work very hard to overly communicate as much as possible. But at some point, while there is a responsibility of your local government to communicate, there is a responsibility of you as a citizen to seek out information that is readily available. So, if somewhere on here, you can put some reference to the fact that as they're filling this out, oh, while I'm on the computer, let me go register my email address with the city website, I would appreciate that. Couple other comments and notes I took here. I appreciate, I appreciate asking the questions on what other local-serving businesses you'd like to see in town, I can tell you now what they're going to be, and then we can also discuss the reality of those businesses never being here. And we've been through this multiple times, so my concern with an exercise of this matter is setting those expectations, or false expectations, over something that we as a city have no control over. Yes, would we love a barber shop? Yes, would we love a cobbler? Yes, would we love a dry cleaner? They're all realities that economics aren't going to allow to happen.
Sure.
So, I would just be cautious about how we approach that, the questions that we include, in terms of setting those expectations, and, hey, because it's on the survey and I've answered what I want, this is what we're going to get. In terms of, I covered that one, that's about it. And I would like to see the final survey in its format with the inclusion of the other council members' commentaries prior to you authorizing this. So, I want this back in front of us, because this has the potential to be an excellent and incredible communication tool, and a tool to get feedback, but it also can create a series of unintended consequences. So, I want us to all be very clear as to what we're asking from the community, and what the community's expectation is going to be, once we've asked them that.
I think we can accommodate that.
Thank you.
I have some comments. I agree 100% with Mayor Canning. When we do surveys, results of those surveys certainly develop expectations, we've seen that when we did the salary infringement benefit survey, that developed some expectations that we were able to meet. When we first talked about doing a community survey, it is over a year ago, it's probably a year and a half ago. Dylan Feek was the city manager at the time. I believe in conversations that I had with him, that he had some kind of a professional group that did these. And I'm not a big guy that understands everything that you can achieve with a survey, but I know that surveys can be manipulated, and I want to make sure that the chances of manipulating data is minimized. Any data can be manipulated, I understand that. But I don't want to have this survey tainted by a suspicion that the survey is put out there to achieve a certain result. So, that's one point I wanted to make. Another point is, is what I had hoped that we would be able to find out from a survey, is how our public would like us to direct future revenue projections and potential increases. I think everybody's aware that as the resorts come online, that there's going to be some substantial additional revenue, and I kind of want to get an idea, and I don't want to run a survey every 30 days to find out, I mean, then, that's not what we should be doing. But I do want to get an idea of where our public would like to see us direct future revenues. And that, you know, there's been things that have come up, here we go, building expectations. There's a new community center that we've talked about, senior citizens have talked about a senior center, we have potential issues out of a fairground we're about to purchase. You know, the recreation activities seem to be well represented in this survey, but what else is there that perhaps we're not seeing that the public sees? We don't control the library, but it could be we have people that want to see increased library services, I don't know. So, that's some of the things that I would like to see come out on a survey, is what, how good a job are we doing, and what should we be doing as we can afford it? Another thing is, is to, you know, does the public think additional revenue should go for additional services? Or do they think we should be paying down debt with that money? I don't know. I mean, your guess is probably as good as mine on that. So, the other thing is, is to look on out in the future a little bit, we passed a climate action resolution, and I, as a council member, greatly supported, went on down in, you know, many meetings. I want to know, does the public think that what we are doing from a climate change standpoint is adequate? Do they think we're doing too much? Do they even think there is such a thing as global warming? It would be difficult for me to believe that, but I'm sure we have some naysayers. And are we directing enough resources towards that? And again, just by saying that, and putting it in the survey, you're perhaps building an expectation that that's what we would do, but if we have 50% of our responses come on back that goes, what we're doing's great, you know, we've got solar things going on roofs, and things are great, then I think we have our answer as to how aggressive we need to be in this community with regard to climate change, so.
How would you articulate those points into questions, though, becomes the-
Damp if I know.
Well, we have to help staff-
I'm not the survey guru, I'm just telling you what I'd like to find out, is where our community is. I don't know whether we look at somebody else's surveys that did that, and incorporate those questions in here, but, and then how long does the survey become? And the longer you get the survey, the less chances you're going to have of somebody completing it all. So, if it sounds like I'm a little conflicted on this issue, I am, I can see plenty of great things that could come out of it, and I can see the law of unintended consequences really coming through. And I agree with Chris, that I think this council should review whatever the final document is that goes out.
Yeah, you know, I think a climate change question can be pretty easily articulated, I think, I wrote down some notes pretty verbatim of what you're saying, and I think we're pretty close there.
I'm sure you'd sound a lot smarter-
You know, in terms of, you know, seeing how the residents or the public would like, you know, spending priorities or things, one of the questions that's been pretty common to all the different surveys that I've looked at from different cities, and the last city I worked for had, this was sort of the key question, and it's, I'm currently on the draft, I believe it's question 14, and it's the one, what's the one thing, and it's an open-ended question, and it's, you know, what's the one thing the city could be doing differently, or what's the one priority you'd like to see for the city? That's probably going to be the question that's the most labor-intensive for staff to code and categorize and go through the answers, but I think probably that's the question, you know, perhaps we'll see the most benefit from-
And we may have 100 different answers.
We may have 100 different answers, we also may have 75% of them fall into the same pot, and we'll realize, you know, then that's something we need to be working on. So, I have high hopes for that question. Some of these other questions, you know, if this does end up being a survey that we do multiple times, we'll probably start showing their value, if this is done annually or every other year, in sort of identifying trends, perhaps, and if certain things rise to the top. But I do think that open-ended question, while again, perhaps the most labor-intensive for staff to code and do the statistics on, has the potential to be the most informative for the council in terms of thinking about goals and allocations.
Definitely, I'd like to see the results of the survey before we do our next goal-setting session, which is probably March.
Just one last thing, will it be possible to include, maybe, maybe it will be too much at the end of this section to include, if you have any additional comments, or something that we not covered here, or maybe at the end of the survey? You know, because we might missing something that somebody think is important, so I think we cannot, if you had additional comments, or something like that.
Yeah, I think that's a fantastic idea, and actually, while I was sitting here listening to earlier parts of this meeting, it occurred to me, you know, perhaps we should even include a question, have you signed up for NICSIL alerts yet? And if not, here's the link to go do it.
Here's how you do it.
If we're starting to put NICSIL alerts for survey awareness and everything like that, you may get people starting to turn NICSIL alerts off, because they don't want to be spammed with stuff, they just want to know when it's really bad.
But at least you can encourage them to at least register for it.
Yes, absolutely. So, we will definitely incorporate your feedback, and I'll work with the city manager to get this back in front of you before it goes out to the public, for sure.
Okay. Anyone in the public, any questions, comments? Yes, please, Erica, come on up. Are you volunteering to help tally?
Yes. Actually, Erica Pusey, 1438 Lake Street, and I completely appreciate what you were saying earlier about your concerns, but just from a citizen's point of view, I want to say this is a fantastic idea. I think you'll get a lot of good information. And to facilitate maybe getting more people surveyed, I don't know if you've thought about having a survey station, or being at the post office, or I'd volunteer to do that, if that's possible.
It has been discussed, nothing officially planned, but if we do move forward with something like that, I will definitely talk to you.
Okay, and I'm sure other people in town would want to-
Even if it's as simple as handing out postcards, somebody manning a little table at the farmer's market, I'd be happy to do that on a particular day, and just hand out a postcard, here's how you go online to register?
Exactly.
Or handing them a paper version, if that's, I know ideally, we want it to go through the-
Put it out in the water bill, too.
Yeah, that has also been discussed, yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Erica. Anyone else? Is this, whichever tool we're going to use for the online survey, and I strongly support going online as much as possible, I'm assuming it's IP address restricted, so you can only, we would want this, we wouldn't want this influenced by somebody who has nothing to do all day, than to complete the survey 100 times.
So, I don't know if it will restrict it necessarily to one IP, one response per IP address, but it will record how many times a certain IP address? Because I do anticipate there could be some situations where multiple people in, say, a household use the same computer, however, if, you know, all of a sudden, 20 or 30 responses from an IP address come in, that might be a little suspicious.
I would certainly think that multiple responses from an IP address would be normal, because my wife's opinions differ from my own about some subjects I won't discuss. But, you know, certainly, there's other members of the family, there may be an in-law living in the house, there may be teenage kids that have an interest in some of this as well.
But if 20 responses come from the Kraus computer, that should be a-
Well, you know, sometimes my dog is sitting on my lap-
So, there's three.
And I would note that this will also be, you know, a mobile phone-friendly version of the survey, too, so people can, you know, do it while they're, I don't know, waiting on a movie or something like that, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, let's bring this back, reformulate. You're welcome to reach out to any council member for language inclusion suggestions from that standpoint.
We'll do it, we appreciate your support, thank you.
Thanks for taking up this endeavor, Zach. Erica, thank you for volunteering. All right, moving on to item number five, cancellation of the October 15, 2019, November 19, 2019, and December 17, 29, regular city council meetings. The recommended action is consider canceling the meetings. Taking us through this will be Irene Camacho Werby, city clerk. And we're, I'm already anticipating some modifications to this, so don't go too deep-
I was just ready to make a motion.
No. But go ahead.
Okay, yes, so briefly, again, before you tonight for consideration, is the cancellation of your second meetings in October, November, and December. As you know, the League of California Cities Annual Conference is scheduled to be in Long Beach, California, the morning of October 16th, which actually falls the next day after the regularly scheduled meeting for the October 15th. Both second meetings in November and December fall close to the holidays, which tends to be a quieter time for city offices. At this time, there are no pending items for the second meetings in those months. However, should it become necessary for the council to act on any urgent items, special meetings can always be called. So, therefore, staff for that reason is recommending the formal cancellation of the meetings, just by consensus, or it will take a different direction. just by consensus, or it will take a different direction.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, any input? Councilmember Kraus, you're teetering.
Yeah, I'm teetering. I understand exactly what, what you're saying. But on the other hand, I don't know if something comes up that we want to call a special meeting where we could have just left the November 19th meeting intact and then canceled it when the agenda would have been posted otherwise. So, and then that avoids perhaps some additional work if, that would take to call a special meeting, you know, notifying the press, notifying, you know, although if we cancel, let's say, the November 19th meeting, that I suppose just goes with the same amount of headache that the institution of a special meeting would be. Although usually with a special meeting, you need to declare an emergency or, or have some reason for a special meeting. No?
Just need to give a little notice. Emergency meeting, less than 24. Eight special meetings.
Special meeting, 72.
72. Here's the recommendation I would make, understanding that we've asked you and appreciating why you want the survey to go out before the holidays, that we've asked Zach to make some significant modifications and that we have an interest in seeing it. As the two representatives going to League of Cities, and thank you for that consideration, would having the meeting, the second meeting in October be problematic for your travel plans?
No, because I'm leaving-
The next day. Okay. So if it pleases the council, I'd say we leave the October meeting. We'll review the survey and whatever other business comes up. I would agree with Gary. At this stage, let's leave the November, second November meeting. At the first November meeting, that's sufficient notice for us to decide to cancel the second one, should there be no business. And then at this point, we've done it, every year I've been on the council, the second December meeting.
Thanksgiving's the 28th this year.
Yeah.
So it doesn't really conflict with the holiday.
Right.
But if we don't have business to take care of.
Right. And that could be decided by the first meeting.
You know, you could make sure all the department heads know that there's a good possibility that there would be no second November meeting.
So with that, would we be comfortable by consensus, keeping the second October meeting, keeping the second November meeting with there being the possibility, if there's no business, to strike that? And then on this resolution or on this, by consensus, we'll strike the second December meeting, which if something dramatic were to happen, we could bring it back?
Yeah, I think that's, that makes sense.
Okay. Anyone in the public? Because I would hate to be accused of us not earning our $200 per month free tax-
Yeah.
-by canceling a meeting. All right. With that said, we will move on. City Manager, are you okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. City Clerk, you're okay with that? Okay. With that said, I will, would like to adjourn this evening's meeting until our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be, remain October 15th. But I'd like to adjourn in memory, in honor of Bob Pacota. So thank you all very much and have a good evening. Adjourned.